UBSUDDLIVE's Local Government Live Streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
We're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor House, please rise and remove your hats.
Salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Mary.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Here.
Supervisor House?
Here.
Supervisor Fuhrer is absent. Supervisor Bradford?
Here.
Supervisor Messick?
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be action items that are routine and can be enacted in one motion.
It's moot.
Okay, have a first, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, first and a second. Any public comment on the Consent Agenda? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passes. Next, we will move on to Public Communications. Any person may speak about any subject of concern, provided it is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public comments shall be limited to a total of 15 minutes, and each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. No board action can be taken on comments made under this heading. Is there any one that would like to make a public comment, Mary?
Yes, through the chair. We have one card and we have no one on Zoom.
Okay.
First person to speak is Tony Farley.
Morning, Tony.
Great, Bradford is Sacramento, the chair now, great. There's Eddie Vasquez over there. Thank you, sir, is Kevin, the county administrator, also the chief Saxon. Thank you, Jared Bender, the county council, also Major George, love that. Great Bradford, the Sacramento, cap to cap, this, see, this, Sags, and all that, the panel there like that. And John Miss, the cowboy farmer, I like that. And, and, and there's, and there's, and there is, there's Supervisor House, Mary's on the house, man. Eddie Vasquez, the Marine Corps veteran, Vietnam American, Reserve, Reserve deputy and Donald Trump tie. And thank you, Rachel, thank you, Rachel from, from Yes, Yes, Yuba, Rachel there. And thank you, Ursula, Ursula Ribbons, thank you, Mia, Mia lady, thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, Dr. Little. And thank you, do, 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 Dan, do, Dan. Thank you, everybody, thank you, service.
Great. Thank you, Tony.
You, Tony.
Anything else, Mary? Okay. So, we're going to close Public Communications and move on to Special Presentations, and if John Harvey could meet me down at the podium over here.
Board of Supervisors, proclamation honoring social worker supervisor three, John Harvey. Whereas John heard his bachelor's degree in education and contributed the early years of his career to serving youth in a residential treatment facility in Illinois for 16 years, building a strong foundation in his dedication to child welfare. And whereas, upon arriving in California in 2000, John began his Child Protective Services career with the Yuba County Health and Human Services Department as an emergency response social worker, where he quickly distinguished himself with his dedication and compassion to protect children from harm and ensure their well-being. And whereas, in 2007, John was promoted to social worker supervisor three, and throughout his career in supervision, has overseen numerous critical programs, including the Permanent Plan, Ongoing Services, Vertical Family, Vertical Resource Family Approval, formerly known as Foster Care Licensing, the Independent Living Program, and the Transitional Housing for Foster Youth. And whereas, John's true passion lies in working with older foster youth, and his proudest accomplishments stem from his work in the Independent Living Program, this work allowed him to support youth through life's most meaningful milestones, such as high school graduations and achievements gained as nominator dependents through participation in extended foster care as they transition into adulthood. And whereas, John has also found deep purpose in mentoring and supervising social workers, guiding many into leadership roles, and celebrating their professional growth. His relationship-oriented approach and collaborative spirit have left a lasting impact on internal teams and external partners alike. And whereas, John hopes to leave behind a legacy centered on treating others with respect, approachability, and kindness, a principle that has led, that has led his 25 years of public service and created lasting friendships and professional relationships. John looks forward to retirement with plans to complete his long-awaited honey-do list and to continue giving back to the community by working with elderly individuals at a wellness center. While John will miss his colleagues, the bonds formed over his years of service will remain close to his heart. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Yuba, that the County of Yuba hereby commends John Harvey for his 25 years of outstanding service and heartfelt commitment to the citizens of Yuba County, and congratulates him on a most honorable retirement.
Just want to say that it's been a wonderful 25 years. I've enjoyed every bit of it, went through a lot of trials and tribulations with Child Protective Services. I'd be amiss if I didn't really thank a lot of the people, my coworkers who came to see this today. I appreciate it, guys. You know, everybody is here to support me. It's been, it's just been a wonderful time, and I just say thank you to everybody. Appreciate it.
Hey, next up is item 277, 2025, receive update from Agency on Area Four. Agency on Aging Area Four, excuse me. Do we have someone here from Agency on Aging Area Four?
See you, anyone.
Okay. I guess we'll, we'll come back to that item if, if someone shows up, so we'll move on to receive update from the Yuba County Historic Resources Commission. Morning, Sue.
Good morning. Um, I'm sure most of you have seen me here, been eight times before, but today I'm not going to ask you for anything, I'm actually going to give you something, and it's the completion of this 10-year-plus project that the commission has been involved in. So, with the help of a gentleman I'm going to introduce in a moment, the Historical Commission, this is our final report on the assessment records. Some of you are new to this project, it's been over 10 years, and the assessment records were stored in the basement, and they were decaying, and we have no digital records. So, our mission was to save these, these records. And so, this is a visual inventory of the records, the assessment records that we've found over this period. And so, in 1850 to 1900, they are stored in the tax collector's office. 1900 to 1975, they are downstairs in a very special environmental control group at the Yuba County Courthouse. It's not working, Mary. And so, because this is a visual, there are over 85 images on this document that will be given to the assessor and also to the tax collector's office, and Mary will keep a copy in the Board of Supervisors' office so that you have a permanent record of them if you want to see their condition or if you're sending someone to access them. So, this is an image of what the shelf looks like in the tax collector's office. And downstairs in the basement, there are 10 racks, and they are by numerical date. And so, because of time, we won't go through this, but you can see this inventory lists the dates that are in each rack. And this is just to show you some of the conditions of them. Remember, these go back to 1850, and so some of them are in pretty poor condition. They have not been opened, and so we don't know if we can actually digitalize them or not, they have been preserved and stored. There is Wheatland, Marysville, and Yuba County down there. And so, there are also other documents in the inventory list that we're going to be giving you today, tells you everything that's stored down there. Couple of things that Yuba County Historical Commission has been doing over the years is, we know you have your Yuba County Champions, that used to be on the wall here, but we would like to make this an annual award, and we're working this year on the Chime family, which is Union Lumber and the Chime Fall Mansion, descendants of the Donner Party, and they will be the winner of this year, and they will be recognized and sent to our state officials. It will include a presentation to them and an award. We're going to nominate the Ramirez Ellis Castle, which was built in 1850, as you know, next year is our 175th anniversary, and so we're nominating them. This is one of the original houses that is still standing and in use today, so we're going to nominate them, and we hope to have a tour and a presentation next year around our birthday celebration. We've also started a new program, this is visiting historical sites. With the monies that the board has given us, we have been able to do a new and updated website, and so this will be added. As you remember, there's 162 identified historical sites in Yuba County. We're not going to be listing them all, but this will be a brochure that we can put in our hotels and stores. It'll also be linked, and they will have a QR code on these existing or new signs or monuments to do that. That's our project coming up, because we're done with the assessor's records. This is just a copy of who is on our commission and who helps with all of these projects, not myself. And so, we have a couple vacancies, the city of Wheatland and Marysville are vacant at this time, and so is Marysville. And so, if you have someone you'd like to nominate, you could contact us. So, this is a very special person, that Kevin Mallon organized this through county council and through the administrative services in March, and we started this program. And this person is here today, you are very fortunate, he has been working for you for 30 years and will be retiring in December. Patrick, can you come up? This is Patrick Thomas, your facilities manager, and he was the one that went down and salvaged those records, cleaned them up, got the shelving, got the room. He did all of the work, and we just got to go down and visit a couple of times. So, in recognition of that... It's great. I get emotional when you do nice things. The Historical Commission would like to present to you, Patrick, for your outstanding dedication to manage and secure these historical documents. Took us 15 years, it only took you six months. We appreciate your professionalism to the safety of these documents that hold Yuba County's history, and with your help, we appreciate, and we are able to complete this project. This is for you. And because he's going to be leaving us, and are you familiar with this book? This is a copy of Yuba County First Historical Commission, and it is their bicentennial, and this is the history of Yuba County, the early history. And so, because, because you're going to be leaving Yuba County, we wanted you to take part of it with you, so we're presenting this to you. So, that's what it says on the, the book in there, and, and so, that's all. So, Mary has a copy of the actual document of the records that are in Jolene's office, and so the rest is a digital copy, and so those will be accessible to Steve Duckles and Jolene Tuck, and also the clerk, and so Mary's in charge of that, she has all the copies.
Do you have the amount for the assessed valuation back in that day?
The assessed evaluation?
Yeah.
I'm not sure how to answer that, Andy, can you be more specific?
In 1900, just the assessment.
Well, you mean to get them digitalized, to get?
No, just, they're total.
Oh, no. We didn't open all the records or do that research, our job was just to preserve them because they were mildewing and getting worms and deteriorating, so now they're safe.
Well.
Thanks to Patrick, he did most of the work, we just went down and did some chores and everything, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any additional board comment or question?
I'd just like to say through the chair, thank you guys for the work you're doing on the Historic Commission, and I know I have a vacancy there, and I have a person who came off the Library Commission, came off the Library Commission, who's supposed to be applying.
And Sue, we're going to double your pay.
So, so I just want to say thank you, Sue, and the rest of the Historic Commission, as well as Patrick, appreciate your work on this project and all the other things that you're working on, so, okay. With that, just checking to see if anyone from the Agents, Agency on Aging Area Four has, has shown up. Okay. We will check in later, but for now, we will move on to county departments then. All matters listed in our county departments are action items, which will be considered and voted on separately. The first item is 280, 2025, Health and Human Services Approve Site Control Memorandum of Understanding with Twin Cities Rescue Mission to Absence Site Control of the County's 14 Forward Temporary Shelter Facility for the Term of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028. Morning.
Hi, good morning, Chair and members of the board. I'm Melissa Shaw, Health and Human Services Deputy Director of Public Health. Today I bring forward for your consideration and approval, a site control agreement with the Twin Cities Rescue Mission for the purpose of allowing the mission to use the premises known as 14 Forward. Here with me today is Erin Walworth, Executive Director of the Twin Cities Rescue Mission. Since 2019, the Salvation Army has been running the day-to-day operations of the 14 Forward Shelter. We are grateful for their partnership and exemplary services they have provided, assisting some of the county's most vulnerable residents. 14 Forward participants have shared with us that they are thankful for the Salvation Army staff who treated them with respect and without judgment. Currently, the county's contract with the Salvation Army ends on June 30th. Additionally, several of the funding sources that we use to support the operations at 14 Forward have decreased significantly, ended, or are ending soon without plans to continue. Lastly, the shelter needs renovations. Health and Human Services was able to secure one-time funding to use for that purpose, and we are working with the Administrative Services Department to procure architectural services to assist with the planning and renovation of 14 Forward, as approved by the board on May 13th, 2025. The Twin Cities Rescue Mission operates a longstanding shelter program for men, and it's located right next door to 14 Forward. The mission has expressed an interest and is prepared to expand their existing shelter program if provided access to the premises at 14 Forward between July 1st and when construction begins. Our long-term goals are to improve the existing conditions at 14 Forward and increase shelter capacity. Although the mission does not currently serve women, they have indicated an interest in serving women in the future. In conclusion, we ask that the board approve the site control agreement between Health and Human Services and the Twin Cities Rescue Mission. I'm happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Thank you. Chair, there are certain rules and regulations that are at the Rescue Mission that haven't been at 14 Forward. Are you going to apply those rules also? Thank you very much. Wow. That'll do it.
Through the chair, just wanted to find out what, what the scope of renovations are going to be for the, the tiny homes?
Without knowing what an architectural firm will recommend, because we're still in that request for proposal process, our large wish list is that we would like to construct a multipurpose building on the property with the goal of the structure, including areas for kitchen, laundry, food storage, office spaces, and a new dorm, structure for women's shelter. Additionally, the 25 individual units need some improvements, and we'd like to include an electric and water component, and the electric component would allow for heating and air. Lastly, we would like to pave the grounds at 14 Forward.
Thank you.
Any additional board questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, any public comment on this item?
Move to approve.
Okay.
A second.
Have a first and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passes, thank you. Next, we will move on to item 296, 2025, Community Development and Services Approve Lease Agreement with Roger Edwards and Dr. Amy Clemens, DBA Innovative Business Solutions LLC at the Yuba County Airport, to a term of five years.
Good morning, Board. My name is Jason Coppin. I work for Community Development, and I have a leadership role and responsibility for the Yuba County Airport. Five years ago, when I was introduced to the airport, it became a quick dream and vision to build camaraderie and a sense of family and to increase activity and awareness about the airport. So, that lends itself to why I'm so excited to stand before you all today and kind of speak a little bit about this lease agreement. It's easy, no, I shouldn't say easy. We find that businesses are attracted to Yuba County, making it appear that it's easy that businesses come to Yuba County and set up shop. To find an aviation-related business that wants to come to the Yuba County Airport seems like a match made in Yuba County. The, the incredible part about it is Roger Edwards and Dr. Amy Clemens have a history within aviation that goes back decades. They have worked as a consulting duo for contracts with the Air Force, and Roger himself personally has a history of restoring World War II aircraft, building them, flying them, keeping them preserved. And so, the goal of this lease agreement is to give them a space. And what Dr. Clemens and Roger Edwards have done thus far is they have purchased a repair station in Waco, Texas, known as, pom, pom, pom. Aircraft Cylinder and Sales and Service, ACSS for short. The North Texas FAA approved their transition plan. Headquarters for Flight Standards has actually handed this project off to the office in Sacramento, and that team is really just awaiting for Dr. Clemens and Roger to have this lease put in place so they can come and inspect the facility and kind of further the ball down the field, so that that repair station, which is an officially recognized designation by the FAA, to do certain things for a particular type of motor or engine, predominantly the Pratt &amp; Whitney 985s and the 1340s. It's rare. Right now, for anybody on the western side of North America to get work done on an aircraft engine of this nature, they have to send it to Tulsa, Oklahoma. So, having a west coast presence is huge. Having said all that, I do want to make myself available for any questions that the board may have. And again, just remind you that we're simply here seeking that you guys approve the lease agreement and authorize the chair to execute that agreement. So, through the chair, if there's any questions from the board?
Any questions or comments from board members?
Through the chair. Jason, you've done an amazing job, and it seems like 10 years you've been working at this, not five. And after the tour that you gave me twice, it was just a, it fit like a glove, your, your being out there, and you've done a wonderful job, and more than we expected. And you've, you've developed things, and it's known that we're one of the few private airports with an working ILS, and hopefully we can expand on that, get some training facilities out here, but, great job, Jason.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'll make a comment. I think it's really important, and it's very rare that we get a business moving from Texas to California, let alone Yuba County. So, yeah, it's usually the other way around, but it's important, there was a facility, Aero Engines in Los Angeles, that did these round motors, and they went completely out of business. They couldn't find anybody really to take over, so it's, it's going to be nice to have, to see these historic planes being worked on at Yuba County and flying in and out of here. So, I did, I did a lot of crop dusting behind a 985 radial engine, in fact, I have a picture in my office, one, so.
The motion?
Great, I'll make a motion to approve.
A second. Okay, great, any public comment on this item? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passes.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, Jason. Next up is 279, 2025, Community Development Services Approve an Economic Development Agreement with the Greater Sacramento Economic Council and a member at random of agreement with the YUBASUTTER Economic Development Corporation for Economic Development Consultative Services and appoint a Yuba County GSEC representative, either a board member or a county administrator, and authorize the chair to execute. Morning, Ashley.
Morning. Bear with me, I'm going to get the screen shared here.
We've heard that before. Look at this.
We're getting closer, we're getting closer.
There you go. Wow. Never seen anybody do that.
I think we're there. All right. Good morning, Chairman Bradford and members of the board. My name is Ashley Potocznik, I'm the Business Engagement Manager here in CDSA, and today I'm going to give you a brief overview of why continuing investment in our regional economic development partners is, is worthwhile and helps us to have a strong economic development strategy here in Yuba County. I also want to note that I do have Trolls Adrian from GSEC and Brenda Stranix here from the YUBASUTTER Economic Development Council, here with me in the audience today, and they're available for questions if any come up as well. So, as a reminder, Yuba County has identified five pillars that guide our economic development efforts. Those are strategic planning and resilience, business expansion and retention, attraction and marketing, talent and workforce development, and small business support. Both YUBASUTTER Economic Development Corporation and GSEC, Greater Sacramento Economic Development Council, contribute to multiple of these pillars, but today I'm going to focus on how they fall in line with our strategic planning and resilience efforts. Wrong button. Yeah. So, I'll be focusing specifically on how they align with our strategic planning and resilience efforts. Before doing that, I want to talk a little bit about why regionalism matters, and why it matters to be engaging with our regional partners in economic development. and why it matters to be engaging with our regional partners in economic development. So Yuba County is part of the Yuba City MSA, or Metropolitan Statistical Area, and that's defined by the U.S. Census Bureau. It's basically an urban center with more than 50,000 people. It can include adjacent counties. It doesn't really look at county or city jurisdictions in so much as areas that have that 50,000 people, population, kind of urban center. So we are part of the Yuba City MSA, and we're also part of the Sacramento-Roseville Combined Statistical Area. Like I mentioned, these are defined by U.S. Census Bureau. They're defined by a greater than just our region. So why does this matter? Site selectors, businesses, and developers are looking at regions. They're not looking necessarily at jurisdictions with property lines that we're drawing. So they're looking at the national, state, and regional levels before even considering a hyper-local location. And so partnering with regional economic development councils such as YSCDC and GSEC give us a greater reach, more resources, and a stronger position when competing for business investment. First, I'll talk a little bit about YSCDC. YSCDC has been a regional partner of ours since 1994. They work with the Yuba and Sutter communities, which is very evident from their name, and they provide several key contributions to our regional economic development efforts. That includes administering a business loan program that provides gap funding for small businesses. They also offer business advising and retention services. They take the lead on the federally required SEDs, or Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, that's required for us to access federal grant funding. And they are also a great local partner on infrastructure projects, which the SEDs and that grant funding really leads into. GSEC, or the Greater Sacramento Economic Development Council, is another great partner, and they're what help us tap into the Greater Sacramento region. So that's the six-county region, including Yuba, Sutter, Sacramento, Yolo, Placer, and Eldorado Counties. There are 28 cities in the Greater Sacramento area as well that are covered in that Greater Sacramento area. They focus specifically on tradable sectors. Tradable sectors are basically those industries that are bringing dollars into our community from a different location. Generally, that's like our industrial users. Those are the tradable sectors that are bringing in outside dollars. GSEC provides lead generation from corporations considering expanding or relocating in the area. They also help with site selection and data and research. They have a very robust data team that is analyzing the data, providing economic impact reporting models. They're a great partner in the work that we do. They also represent us at trade shows, summits, and investment missions across the nation and globally. So we have these regional partners, and we work directly with them. So our economic development team with YSCDC and with GSEC, we work together on one mission, which is to improve the economic appetite, economic health, I guess, I don't, the economics of our region. On this graphic, it shows some of the different elements that YSCDC and GSEC are providing and where the overlap is. We really do all work together towards one mission, which is getting businesses to say yes to investing here. And so my recommendation today is to approve the fiscal year 2526 agreements with YSCDC and with GSEC. There are two separate agreements before you. And these partnerships allow us to work collectively and to bring investment here, as I mentioned. So thank you for your time. Trolls and Brenda are here as well if there are any questions, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ashley. Any questions or comments from Board members?
Through the Chair. You're aware that Yuba County has been growing at 500 homes for the past 10 years. If we didn't do anything for the next 10 years, we have 4,700 in the pipeline.
Yes.
We're the fastest per capita growing county in the state and have been for a lot of years. And I think that we're going to exceed the population of Sutter County by very quickly here. We're not going to be a stepchild anymore. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Through the Chair. I just thank you guys for pushing the regional approach and the partnerships across the different entities. Each one kind of offers their own expertise, and it keeps us ahead of the game with everybody else instead of being siloed off and asking for help when you need it. Being integrated is a lot better. So thank you guys for that work.
I also just kind of wanted to echo some of those comments. I've been the EDC representative from Yuba County in the past, and I'm currently the GSEC representative. And I appreciate you pointing out not only the different areas that they cover in our region with YSCDC being focused on Yuba Sutter and GSEC being focused really on the Greater Sacramento area, but also the different things that both organizations bring to the table and provide to Yuba County. I think it's easy to maybe question why we're in two different economic development organizations and assume that there's a lot of overlap in what they do. And from what I've seen, there's not a lot of overlap. There's a lot of collaboration and partnership, and that's a big difference. And so I do think it's really important that we continue to invest and support both organizations and receive the support that they provide us. And so I thank both organizations for the work they do in Yuba County, as well as our local economic development team. So.
I would move to approve the recommendation.
A second.
Okay, we also, as part of the recommendation, need to appoint a representative to GSEC. I currently serve that role. I'd certainly be interested in continuing that.
I'm the nominee, Gary, to stay on CSAC.
Yeah, I think.
GSEC, okay.
CSAC.
GSEC.
Leaving the way it is.
Okay.
Makes it smoother.
Great. Any public comment on this item?
You need a roll call vote.
Okay, seeing none, it looks like we do not need a roll call vote for this one. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, I understand that someone from Agency on Aging has shown up. So we'll move back to that presentation now at this point. Good morning. Oh, Chair, there we go.
Good morning, Board. I'm Pam Miller. I'm the Executive Director of the Agency on Aging Area Four, and we are the Area Agency on Aging that serves Yuba and Sutter Counties, as well as five other counties in this area. I just wanted to talk about our successes and the things that we do for the older adults and people with disabilities in this community. So about 10 years ago, when the Aging and Disability Resources Movement really hit hard in California, and that was taking the Older Americans Act programs, which would be the Area Agency on Aging, and then the independent living programs that serve people with disabilities, and bringing them together to make a more blended network. And so a few years ago, we realized that we really needed to change our mission and vision in order to really sort of mirror what that movement is like. And so our mission is to enriching the lives of older adults and people with disabilities by fostering networks of support, advocating for individual choice, collaborating with others, and ensuring equity and striving to do so with conviction. And our vision is to have an ageist and ableist society. So who are we? Well, for 52 years, we have been serving Yuba and Sutter Counties. We help older adults live independently, safely, and with dignity. We hope that we are a leader and an advocate for major funding and for the community. And I think it's a great advantage to us that we are in Sacramento because that really helps us do a lot of advocacy at the Capitol. And we certainly want to focus on older adults and the family caregivers and make sure that they have support. So there are many different ways that the, over 50 area agencies, no, no, 35 area agencies in California are set up. Many of them are county. Some of them are joint powers authorities and some are nonprofit. We are one of two in California that is both a joint powers and a nonprofit. So as a nonprofit, we're able to really be cost-effective. When I was the Director of Employment and Social Services for Yolo County, I think our admin rate was probably about 33%. We are able to keep our admin rate under 10%, which is a huge savings in terms of providing programming. The other thing that we're able to do is to do some fundraising and also bring in other grants. So what is the advantage of being a joint powers authority? I think there's lots of advantages. First of all, we're able to take some of the resources from more metropolitan areas and bring them into the rural areas. That gives us regional flexibility and funding. We are able to leverage grants, both state and federal. We recently have just gotten a grant that we did in partnership with the California Department of Aging, and we're going to be able to have community health workers now serving in Yuba and Sutter Counties. And so we're very excited about that. We also do cross-county innovations. So I think especially for Yuba County, because you and Sutter County do so much together. But there are other counties that do a lot together also. And as I said, the administrative costs are much better. I wanted to introduce Brittany Lathrep. So Brittany is our new manager over Meals on Wheels in Yuba and Sutter. What's awesome about her is she's not only a gerontologist, but she also has a degree in nutrition. And so I was going to let her talk a little bit about Meals on Wheels.
Thank you for having us today. Sorry, my voice is going in and out. But I just wanted to speak a little bit about the Meals on Wheels program. So from July of last year to April of 2025, we've served 24,806 meals between Sutter and Yuba County, sorry. We recently partnered with Yolo County Meals on Wheels to help serve medically tailored meals. We're going to start this grant up in around September, October. We just ensured a storage area for a commercial fridge and freezer, and we're just waiting for that fridge and freezer to arrive, and then we can start offering medically tailored meals to these clients. And then we're currently exploring ways to bridge the gap caused by funding reductions for 2025 to 26. We're looking at to-go meals as an option. One of our major issues at this time is storage locations. So in order to find a storage location, that would open up our ability to do to-go meals. We are looking at frozen meal options to serve more, and we're exploring ways to reduce the cost per meal. Thank you.
And I wanted to talk a couple more comments about Meals on Wheels. You know, during COVID, we were flush with money. First of all, we discovered how many older adults were really food insecure. But we had lots and lots of money, and we could provide lots and lots of meals, and that has dried up. And so now we're really looking at more creative ways and getting grants and things like that to help augment the funding that we do get. Because one of the things that we don't want to do is to diminish the quality of the meals that we serve. And we're very proud of the meals. And what's really awesome about the meals that we serve is they're coming out of local mom and pop restaurants. So that's also adding to the economy in Yuba and Sutter. Some of the milestones that we have experienced here is pre-COVID. We had a Brownsville Meals Program where we really helped the folks up there not only with food insecurity, but also with isolation. The Yuba County Commission on Aging has just been reinstated and is becoming a great success, and we're really happy about that. For a few years, there was no commission, and I think it's so important that every community has a commission. The Aging and Disability Resource Connection, which is us in partnership with Fried, is going very, very strong. And in fact, yesterday, we found out from AARP that they have designated this county as an age-friendly community. And that was work that we did with Fried, with the ADRC. I think that German came and talked to you about the LayDAP grant. So that's the grant that helped bring the master plan for aging kind of alive here in this community with meetings and plans and everything. And so that's underway. And then the current project that we're really working on is we really think that there needs to be established a Yuba County Senior Center. There's a Yuba City Senior Center, but there is no Yuba County Senior Center in Yuba County. And I think that it's really vital to have that hub for older adults and people with disabilities to be able to visit. So I'm going to talk a little bit about LayDAP, and I think that you've heard this from German. But we worked closely with Fried to align for California's master plan. So we had focus groups, we had countywide surveys. We took local data and analyzed it. There were two regional workshops that brought in over 30 stakeholders that were very well attended. And then we applied for the AARP Age Friendly Community Designation, which we found out after I did the slideshow that we've gotten. So that's why I was bringing it up now. So the Yuba Sutter Aging and Disability Resource Connection is our partnership, as I said, with Fried, and there's four core services that we provide: enhanced information and assistance. So if you call the ADRC and you say, "I need help with housing," they're going to ask you questions like, you know, "Why do you need help with housing? Are you being evicted?" I mean, they ask, they don't just give you the number that you need to call. They really try to go dive deeper. And then they will call you back to make sure that you've got the services that you need, or they will do a warm handoff to someone else. They also have person-centered transition services. So that means that if you're in a hospital or a nursing home and you want to go home, we help provide those services to get you home. And then person-centered options counseling. When I was going to school to become a social worker many, many, many years ago, we would visit someone and we would say, "Oh, I've just done an assessment of you, and these are the services that you need." We never asked the people what services they felt they needed. And so with person-centered options counseling, we actually ask the person, "What do you feel you need to enrich your life or to have more stable life?" And then that's what we try to provide for them. And then short-term service coordination is when something's happening in someone's life and they just need a little help for a while, we can provide that. So as I said, the core partners are Fried and us. So I think it's really important just to talk about the fact that the way that we are organized, we really do have local flexibility and regional impact. We're able to be flexible and deploy services quickly. I think that was really seen during COVID, when we were able to work with restaurants and things like that to get things out. We also, during COVID, really helped with getting out vaccination information and all sorts of other things. I think that the way that we develop our area plan, which we have to do every four years for the California Department of Aging, is we bring stakeholders and community members together, and we ask them, "What services of this list that we can provide do you want in your community?" So we really try to let the community tell us what they want. I think that we're really becoming very skilled working with Fried in order to be a resource coordinator for the Aging and Disability Community. And I think that we've also brought some innovations to this area, like I was just talking about with bringing in the community workers that we're going to have. So we remain committed to growing partnerships with local providers, supporting rural and hard-to-reach older adults. I think this is especially important that we've discovered how many folks are really isolated, building community supports for programs and services, and empowering older adults to age in place with dignity. And it's interesting, when you talk to many older adults, they will tell you they want to stay in their home. They don't want to be placed, which is wonderful. But many of them don't really have a plan on how to do that. And so it's helping them develop a plan on how they can age in place that's really important. So starting in July, which is the beginning of the new fiscal year, the programs that we are funding in this area are Meals on Wheels, Yuba Sutter Legal Center, which we have funded for many, many years, and now Connecting Point Community Services, which we have funded in other counties, but it's newly funded in this county. And I want to thank Supervisor Vasquez and John Messick and Wendell Peters, who are all on our governing board from this area, and then our advisory council. And then our advisory council is Rob Drown and Laura Drown. They're very, very important to our agency. And I will take any questions if you have any.
Questions and comments from board members?
Through the chair. There was rumors floating in Sacramento because of cutbacks with the imbalance in the budget. Nothing's, do you know if anything is being cut out of the Older Americans Act?
So when the, when the initial budget came out, the federal budget, all of the programs had been eliminated. And that was very scary for us. And so there was a lot of advocacy done with US Aging and other organizations. And it looks like right now, other than some of what we call Title V programs, which have to do with employment and stuff, it looks like most of the, of our programs are back in the budget at flat funding.
Okay. There was a situation where there was a cutback in services on Meals on Wheels that we, as a county, were not aware of until the last minute. And we, we would like to have it in the agreement that before any things are cut in Yuba County that we be consulted as to whether we can, we can assist in some of the funding, because it took us five days to find funding for three months, three, three months of balance on that. And somehow, you know, when you cut back the meals on the older people, they get a little mean.
As I said, that when the COVID money dried up, it was jarring.
Oh, I understand. They, they hit you and they said, "These programs don't count." But please let us know, because Yuba County is rather unique. We're not broke.
Yes, well, two things. First of all, we really appreciated Yuba County stepping up and providing funding, extended funding for a while. The other thing that I want to say is that I think that's why it's so important Supervisor Vasquez, that we love you at the board meetings. So you know all the things that are happening in the agency in terms of funding and everything. So we really appreciate your participation.
You know, the, after we found a solution to the problem, somebody still sent out a letter and kind of, before any communications go out to any of our recipients from Area Four, they should really notify the board here. And we'll, we'll find some way to do it. We overcome a debt. Thank you.
Through the chair. Thank you for what you do with Area Four. I just have a few questions.
Sure.
So other than the Meals on Wheels, the ADRC, how many Yuba County residents have taken advantage of that or been served by that?
Of the ADRC?
Yeah.
I couldn't give you that number off my head, but I will email it to you.
Okay. And then, so the board that's made up from all those different counties, how is the, how's the number of voting members on that board? How is it spread? Is it spread evenly? Is it by population?
No, it's so, so Sacramento has five members. And then the rest of the counties have two voting members and one alternate.
Okay. And let's see here. And so with that, is, is Yuba County as well served as, as the bigger counties, as Sacramento?
Yeah, I mean, so we, we actually assign what we call a regional services specialist to the county. Yours is Clayton Wyatt. And they really are very focused on the county that they serve to make sure that they're getting all of the services that they need.
All right. And then I've, I've been helping push along our, what's been called the Yuba County Seniors on the Go Program, that they just changed their name. They're putting on some programming in our area. And I see they have, they've engaged Fried and a couple of our other local NGOs to help out with that. What does Area Four on Aging provide to help with senior programming in Yuba County such as that?
We don't, we don't have specific funding for that program. The three programs that we have funding for right now are Meals on Wheels, Legal Services, and Connecting Point. And that was, that was, that was decided by the governing board. So they, they had a meeting, community meetings on what services they wanted with the, with the finite amount of dollars that each county has. And then we went through an RFP process. And then the board then selected the people that we're going to be serving.
Okay. And my last, my last question is the, what assistance comes from the Area Four on Aging for the, the push for a Yuba County Senior Center? Is there, is there any help coming?
Well, we, we don't have funding for it, but we, we do have advocacy. And we can also help with grants.
Okay. So that's a big push in, in my districts and for our aging population?
It needed so much. Yes, I totally agree with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other board comment or questions? Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So given that topic, if they're ready, I'd actually like to go to item 312 next. I think it's appropriate to do the Health and Human Services Adopt Resolution authorizing Health and Human Services directly to enter into an agreement with Tri-County's Community Center for a Seniors on the Go Yuba County Program. Sorry to take you out of order without any warning.
Good morning, Chair and member, members of the board. My name is Jessica Garcia and I'm the Deputy Director of the Child and Adult Protective Services Division at Yuba County Health and Human Services. I'm here today to request your approval for a resolution authorizing Health and Human Services Director to enter into an agreement with Tri-County's Community Center for the Seniors on the Go Yuba County Program. This agreement has been developed in partnership with Tri-County's Community Center and the Yuba County Commission on Aging. It is the result of a month-long collaborative effort to ensure that one-time funding for senior programs is utilized effectively before it expires at the end of this fiscal year. These funds will not be available in the next fiscal year, so it's critical that the agreement be executed prior to June 30th of this year. This agreement, which is almost complete, about 99% complete, would cover the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. It allows for the use of the Tri-County's Community Center, a multi-use facility that already hosts a variety of community events and services. The Seniors on the Go Yuba County Program will provide dedicated enrichment activities for adults, including arts and crafts, computer classes, guest speakers, and wellness presentations. Services will be offered two days per week for a minimum of two hours per day. In addition, a monthly luncheon will be held at no cost to participants, fostering social connection and engagement among, among, sorry, among our senior population. Approval of this resolution will allow us to finalize and execute the agreement in a timely manner, ensuring these important services are available to Yuba County's older adults in the, in the coming year. Thank you for your consideration and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Through the chair. Is that the old skating rink?
Yes, it is.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you very much. But we need something across the river.
Yes, and I think this is the starting point. And then once data is collected in regards to participation and engagement, the Commission on Aging and other agencies that serve adults will, will try to see how we could, we could expand and also sustain programs like this for our seniors.
Through the chair. I love the, the idea of getting this going in Marysville and expanding. But something we might look at in the meantime is, is utilizing Yuba-Sutter Transit, maybe even getting them to pilot their, their mod transit where it could take seniors from their homes to the senior center until we can have programming on the other side of the river. I know they said they're kind of underperforming on their numbers of passenger counts on that new service and they're open to flexibility. So maybe it's something we could push through. But the point I was making with the previous speaker was that you guys are doing the work and, and the community members that are on that, our local board are doing the work to push the program forward. And I want to make sure, you know, you guys shine. So I would, I would move to approve when time is right. Okay. Is there a second? Any additional board comment or question? Is there any public comment on this item? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thanks. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to go back to item 295, 2025, Administrative Services. Approve the Internal Loan Agreement from Fund 827 to the Utility Internal Service Fund in the amount of $6.4 million and some change. And approve Budget Adjustment Request Form and authorize Chair to execute.
Good morning, Board. I'm Mender Baines with Admin Services. I'm here to request that the board approves the loan, the attached loan agreement between Fund 827 and the Utility ISF, the Internal Service Fund, in the amount of $6,482,000. And also approve the Budget Adjustment Request for $2,099,119,000. Previously, I presented both phases, Phase One and Phase Two, to the board. Phase One was a while back. It was, it's the battery backup. We're hopeful that it'll be completed early next fiscal year. Once that's completed, we'll start getting reimbursed. The first reimbursement we'll receive is $650,000. And then for the next five years, 130 consecutive, consecutively for five years. For Phase Two, that was just recently brought to the board, is the solar shade structures at the sheriff's facility in the library. And we also discussed at that board meeting about getting a loan. So that's why I'm here today requesting approximately $6.5 million worth of loan. And I attach an exhibit that shows a 25-year payment plan. And we're using two and a quarter percent. That's the pull rate and that's going to fluctuate. So it's just an estimate to show you guys what it may look like. Our intent is to pay the loan back as quickly as possible. And then the Budget Adjustment Request for approximately $2.1 million. We haven't received that reimbursement from PG&E yet because the battery backup's not completed. And then for Phase Two, we had the vendor expedite purchasing materials due to potential increase in tariffs. So we received an invoice of approximately $1.5 million. And that's why we're requesting $2.1 million in the adjustment. Is there any questions?
Through the chair. What are, what are our savings so far in the solar that we put up?
Here at the Government Center?
Yeah.
And Packard, I'd have to look at that. There's, it actually gets close to offsetting what we use here at the Government Center.
Yeah. It'd be nice to actually have something other than smoke and mirrors on solar.
Through the chair. My question, similar to his, is have our other projects, are they on track to pay themselves off?
Actually, here at the Government Center, in two years, we'll be paying our loan off here at the Government Center. But like I said, here at the Government Center, it, it's pretty balanced. At Packard, we can actually install more solar. We use more energy there than what's being produced. And we do have the solar field there. We're allocating the production there to other facilities. And we're balancing that off so we're not allocating too much that we lose funding. So we can look at that and I can bring that to the board.
So you don't, you don't know if they're paying themselves off?
We are, we do have savings. Yes. The amount of savings, I don't know that number offhand, no.
If I could, through the chair, maybe to, to help with the, the question more direct, Per Mender. Is, is the solar producing what, as advertised, right? So we were sold by that vendor that the solar would produce X and we'd be able to pay ourselves off in X number of years?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else from the board? Okay. Any public comment on this item?
Approve.
Okay, there's a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor House?
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr is absent. Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Per Mender. Next up, 303, 2025, Sheriff Coroner, approved budget adjustment in the amount of $1,873,000. Oh, thank you. Oh, wait, I'm way off, way off. Thank you for that correction.
Change.
$1,873 to account as listed, which is equipment and IT software, and approve the budget adjustment in total amount of $67,400 to the account as listed, maintenance equipment and equipment vehicles. Morning, Under Sheriff.
All right, good morning, good morning, Board. Nick Morzinski, Under Sheriff with the, with the Sheriff's Office. And Mr. Chair, you about gave me a heart attack with that million-dollar number. So yes, I'm up here to request the approved budget adjustment for two accounts, one affecting the jail and one affecting our auto services budgets. I will start with this, that we have a phenomenal finance team and our finance manager, Don Wells, usually presents the ins and outs on these. So I'm going to do my best to speak with authority on it, but I, I think I have it figured out. So with the, in regards to the first one, the adjustment to our capital asset fund in the amount of $1,873. So back in 2022, we purchased some software for the jail called Guardian RFID. It took a few years for that to get implemented and it just came through this current fiscal year. What wasn't accounted for was the sales tax and use tax on that program. Created a deficit of about $1,800 bucks and, and that's what we're asking to make that adjustment for on that one today. The second one is a little bit more complex. Due to the rising costs in, in maintenance and service of our fleet vehicles, we are increasing the maintenance and equipment appropriation up to $143,000 and some change. The way that we're going to tackle that is, so we, we increased the vehicle maintenance by $143,000. But we were able to offset $75,800 of that due to vehicle purchases that we made back in the 2324 fiscal year. But the outfit and the build-out didn't take place until this, this current fiscal year. So that's going to offset that a bit. And that left us with a deficit of $67,400. Under our current approved 2526 budget, our general fund revenue is $95,350 due to increase in rent and equipment appropriations. And we're going to apply some of our asset forfeiture monies towards that in the amount of $27,950. And that leaves a surplus of that $67,400 to offset the new maintenance costs in the vehicle fund. So that's the best way that I can explain how that works. If you've got any questions, shoot, man, and I'll, I'll do my best.
Through the chair, that's a, that's a good shuffle. That's a great shuffle.
Bit of shuffle.
Learned to do that.
Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
Approve. Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor House?
Yes.
Supervisor Fuhr is absent. Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Nick, could you stick around after the meeting? I just have a quick question for you. Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to move to item of public interest and we have one, item 290, from the Treasurer or Tax Collector. Approve second-hand dealer's license for Stan Plovoski with Echo ATM LLC with a business location at Food Max, 6,000 Linterst Avenue in Linda.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. Jolie Turk, Yuba County Treasurer and Tax Collector. I am here this morning for a second-hand dealer's license for Echo ATM, which will be stated in Food Max if approved. We received the application from Echo ATM on May 9th and we did provide the license application to the Sheriff's Department for review and recommendation. And on June 3rd, they did provide us a response in writing expressing no objection to the issuance of the license. We did let the applicant know that we would be going before the board today. They may be attending via Zoom because they are out of Southern California. And also, if you guys would like, I did bring some literature that they provide that gives you a little bit more information on what it is. And as you can see from the literature that they provided, essentially, it is a kiosk that will be unmanned. There won't be any staff. And people can basically turn their cell phones in for cash. They do, if you look in the literature, they do They do, if you look in the literature, they do describe that they work with law enforcement. So if there's any questionable merchandise that's sold to the ATM, they do provide a copy of the ID that was used. They'll provide video footage because there are three cameras according to the literature that they have on the, the Echo ATM. And that was mostly the gist of what was in the literature. I can try and answer questions as best as possible, but hopefully they have somebody attending via Zoom if you have questions specific for them.
Through the chair. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any public comment on this item? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jolie.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is correspondence and there are three items as noted on the agenda. And we will move into Board and Staff Member Reports and we will start with Supervisor Vasquez.
Years ago, when I went through the Police Academy, we had mottos for different classes and ours was honesty and integrity. And I think in today's society, we need to kind of remember that integrity is actually doing what's right when nobody's looking. And that seems to be in short supply in certain areas. I, I would ask that supervisors also notify the Clerk of the Board anytime they leave the county because I think that's a requirement in the responsibilities of the supervisors to let us know if they're not going to be there. And we had a meeting with EPA yesterday. It was quite interesting and opened up some new avenues for funding for us.
Yeah. Under House.
Mine's pretty, pretty good news. Spent the last week at the Yuba Sutter Fair. Almost one and a half million dollars spent at the livestock auction, not by me.
This was, this was.
Yeah. So you guys have till Friday to add on to all the kids over there to push us over the other competing counties so that our kids can have a good start and get their mind business oriented and keep their hands active other places other than video games. So, yeah. And then I was just, just happy to be a part of the, getting that Yuba County Seniors on the Go rolling. It's good to see funding going toward that. Good job, Jen. And then also yesterday, I spent the day playing golf with the United Way and Food Bank at the Better Together Golf Tournament. It was pretty, pretty fun, long day for me, but after a week at the fair. But so many good community participants there, but it, just ultimately anything we could do to support that food bank as the funding gets trimmed down. I mean, hopefully we'll get to a place where we won't need, we won't have food lines, we won't have, you know, that need in the future if we can keep things going in the right direction. But to have them lose a lot of funding really quick, it makes it kind of difficult to operate. So if you can support the food bank in any way, go ahead and do that. And thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Supervisor Messick?
I also spent a week at the fair camping with Rinnick. Accidentally bought a pig, like I accidentally buy one here and some rabbits.
The accident.
I try not to buy, but I always end up getting stuck with one. So anyway, yeah, it's a great to support all the kids over there. It was a fun week. I've been camped there 24 of the last 29 fairs with my own kids in the 4H programs. And this is the best fair I ever remember weather-wise. It was cool all week except for one hot day. In fact, I had to go home and get a sweatshirt in the middle of the fair. So that's all I have to report. I'm still recovering.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. I took second place in the Browns Valley Alley Brisket Cookoff this year. So be back to defend my title and get back to number one next year.
Congratulations. Mary, anything from the Clerk's office today?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Counsel?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. And nothing from Kevin either? Okay. First, just a clarifying question for Supervisor Vasquez. With the request that you made about other Board members when they leave the county, I assume you mean overnight trips for, for work or personal business as opposed to, you know, leaving for the day kind of thing for a meeting or some other reason? Okay. And so I also participated in the golf tournament yesterday and, and had a great time. Last week, I had the opportunity to participate on a panel at the California Foundation on the Environment and the Economy. The panel was focused on disaster resiliency, in particular with respect to transportation and other infrastructure. And I brought a rural county perspective to that discussion. And so I was able to talk about everything we've done with respect to flood risk reduction and forest resiliency. And then more from a county perspective as well, some of the transportation, climate resiliency efforts we have going on. For example, taking a look at all of the culverts in the foothills and that are, that on the older side and maybe designed for a different rainfall pattern and seeing where upgrades need to be made, given current anticipated rainfall amounts. And then similarly on the valley floor, looking at drainage infrastructure, particularly in Olivehurst and Linda and what the county is doing with respect to analyzing that and the challenges there. So it was a great opportunity. Also, last week, we hosted some staff from Senator Schiff and Senator Padilla's offices. They came to learn more about Yuba County and what's going on here and how they could help us. And probation, we, we gave them an economic development overview of what's going on in the county and all the growth that's happening. And then probation came and really conveyed the importance of federal funding for the Victim Services Program that we have here in the county and the great job that we do. So hopefully that will be fruitful. And finally, to your, to your point, Director Vasquez, just to let you and the rest of the Board know, the remainder of the week, I will be in Modoc County for the RCRC County of the Chair Board Meeting. So it's the one county in the state I've never been to out of 58. So I'm looking forward to, to checking out Crossing County 58 off the list. So, and it should, will be up in all tourist. So it should be, should be a lengthy and beautiful drive to get up there and a good time learning about Modoc County. So, and some community events for the Fourth of July. Obviously, we have the, the fireworks in the river bottoms that Yuba County is a sponsor of. And then earlier that day, in my district, there's the Fourth of July Bike and Wagon Children's Parade in Plumas Lake. And kind of in the middle part of the day is the Fourth of July Barbecue over in Wheatland. So if you're looking for something to do in the morning or kind of the middle of the day before you hit the fireworks at the river bottoms, those are, those are two options in the south part of the county. So with that, we will recess until 10:30, at which point we'll go into closed session for the items listed on the agenda.
YubaSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumislakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties.